Habba' Agani.
Salam aleikum.
Oh, Hotep. You know Larry Hamm gonna get it all right, right? How's everybody doing? My name is Ron Daniels. I'm president of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century. And we are so delighted to have all of you here for this town hall meeting. It's gonna be exciting, it's gonna be inspirational. You've just seen, many of you, the speech by Dr. Martin Luther King, which was delivered 50 years ago. 50 years ago on the date of his martyrdom, or before his martyrdom actually. This is the speech that he delivered the night before he was taken away from us. So we gather on a very, very auspicious occasion. We're gonna have a great time this evening. And we want to be in a position to start it off right. And we want to begin that by having a welcome from the dynamic, energetic, and visionary person who is leading the charge to help make Newark a model city. And that's what we're here about. We're here because we believe in the vision of the Honorable Raz J. Baraka. Not only in terms of the lineage and the family and the person, but because of the policies. Danny Glover is always good about that. He talks about the, but it's about the policies. And so when the policies are personified in the person, we have a perfect synergy, if you will. And that's what we have. And so we want to invite this dynamic brother to come to the stage and to present your welcome. Please welcome, if you will, the, I have to say acting, I'm gonna be lobbying. The Acting Deputy Mayor Director for Development and Economic and Housing Development, the one and only Carmelo Garcia.
Thank you, brother Dr. Daniels. It is an honor to be here with you. It's so exciting. I welcome you on behalf of the honorable and amazing Mayor Raz J. Baraka. That's right. As Dr. Daniels stated, I have the great joy and passion to lead the mayor's efforts to champion his vision and to make sure we implement a community wealth building model here in the city of Newark. And there's nothing greater than a national town hall meeting. Do you agree? One of the things that I love about Mayor Baraka, and I do have the distinction of working for a transformational leader, a man who is a humanitarian, a leader who is visionary and progressive, and is all about results for New Yorkers first and always, whose heart and humanitarian efforts to get this city revitalized, reclaimed, and redeveloped is what we're doing for you. Every day, every day, he holds us accountable. He is a champion for what any city in America should be pursuing, especially when you're celebrating 50 years of the vision and dream that Dr. King led, who was here in the city of Newark at that time, leading the efforts for the Fair Housing Act. And we know more than ever today that you have a mayor, I have a boss, who first and foremost cares about his people and puts you first to make sure that equality in housing, healthcare, education, and jobs is paramount. Economic employment and environmental impact to grow this city for equitable growth that makes a difference in all, in each, in everyone of our lives. And so on behalf of Mayor Baraka, Council President Mildred Crump, and the City Council, our first African-American councilwoman. I'm getting better applause than that. One of the beauties of this economic summit, as Dr. Daniels and Dr. Sanieka and I worked hard and my staff, you know, under the mayor's direction, to make this happen with these distinct, amazing civic leaders who have poured out today and tomorrow policies and best practices to really put forth a urban marshal plan that will make a difference and set the tone, a national tone, for what we're doing. Because we get it. We know what it takes, and the mayor is leading that path, leading that light. Because as I always say, to whom much is given, much is required. So with that, we welcome you, we thank you, because participation is democracy. Participation is democracy. And you being here tonight with us in the conversation, partaking with this amazing panel, distinct stars, the amazing Danny Glover, ambassador, humanitarian, one of a kind, representing here in the city of Newark. So enjoy, sit tight, be a part of the conversation, be empowered. It's an effective one. We thank you, and God bless. Thank you, everyone.
All right, a lot of energy up in here, that's what I like. And by the way, this is being streamed nationwide. We want the whole world to know what's happening in Newark, as we used to say back in the day. All right, we want the whole world to know what's happening. And now to bring invocation, to bless this gathering. We have the pleasure of, in this order, bringing, and she's my adopted pastor because she's the most energetic, dynamic. I mean, she got so much energy, I just, you know, if she just come by and I just get a whip, I'm ready to roll. Y'all heard her on my radio shows, some of y'all heard her on my radio show a couple of weeks ago. I mean, she is really, really something else. And so we're gonna hear from Reverend Louis Scott Roundtree, clergy affairs manager of the city of Newark. Followed by Imam Akil Mateen, Imam of Mastid Ash Shafichifa, and President of United Muslims Incorporated of Newark, New Jersey. Let's give him a round of applause as they come.
Good evening, everyone. Come on, we gotta make some noise up in here. Newark is doing great things. We have a visionary that's doing great things, and it's a poor frog that don't praise his own pond. And I'm excited about the Honorable Mayor Raz Baraka. So can we really make some noise? Okay, let's really make some noise. Newark is doing great things. I want to thank Ron Daniels for the opportunity to stand before you this evening and the Institute of Black World 21st Century. I was asked to come before you this evening, to all of you great individuals that sit on the panel and who join us this evening, and to everybody that's in here. How many of everybody is somebody in God's eyes? Y'all do know that, right? Okay. So I was asked to invoke God's presence. As I was preparing to come here this evening, I thought about Dr. King, and I thought about him being a praying man. So in the spirit of Dr. King, I want to share with you that we know that he was a crier for strength, to carry on the work of peace and justice, for courage to be nonviolent, come what may, for blessings on the movements for civil rights, justice, and peace, for healing for the oppressed and the oppressors, and for the coming of God's reign of peace, love, and nonviolence here and now. Pray with me if you will. Oh God, we thank you for the fact that you have inspired men and women in all nations and in all cultures. We call you different names. Some call you Allah, some call you Elohim, some call you Jehovah, some call you Buddha, some call you Jesus. But we know that some call you the unmoved mover. But we know that these are all the names for one and the same God. God, we thank you for the lives of our ancestors and prophets in the past who have revealed to us that we can stand up amid the problems and difficulties and trials of life and not give in. We thank you for our four parents who've given us something in the midst of the darkness of exploitation and oppression to keep going. Grant that we will go on with the proper faith and the proper determination of will so that we will be able to make a creative contribution to this world in the name and the spirit of our God. Eternal God, out of whose mind this great cosmic universe, we bless you. Help us to seek that which is high, noble, and good. Help us in the moment of difficult decision. God grants us that we go out and face life with all of its decisions as we face the bitter cup, which we will inevitably face day by day. God grant that we will learn this one thing, and that is to make the transition from this cup to nevertheless. Thou eternal God, out of whose absolute power and infinite intelligence the whole universe has come into being, we humbly confess that we have not loved thee with our hearts, our souls, and our minds, and we have not loved our neighbors as God has loved us. We have kingdom of understanding where men and women will live together as brothers and sisters with dignity and worth of every human being. God, we thank you for the inspiration of God and all that he has given to us. Grant that we will love you with our hearts, souls, and minds. We ask right now, God, that as we invoke your presence into this place, that you will keep our minds, keep our hearts, keep us where we need to be, keep our focus, that we will stand with each other, that all that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. fought for will not be in vain. We ask right now, God, that as you cover the people in this room, that you bless each household, that you cover each one from the crown of their heads to the soul of their feet. Bless this event, God, bless this city, God, bless our mayor, God, bless our state, God, bless our country, God, bless each and everyone in this world, God. Keep your arms of protection around us. We pray, oh God, that you will be in all of us to strengthen us, beneath all of us to support us, go before all of us to guide us. Keep your arms of protection around us, keep your angels encamped over us as a shelter. We will be careful not to take credit for nothing that you have done, but say, "God, you did it, and we thank you." In Jesus' name, in the name of Allah, in the name of Elohim, in the name of Yahweh. We have prayed in the name of our Creator. And everyone in agreement with me said, "Amen." Amen? And amen?
It's Millaheh, Rukmanehein, with Allah's name, God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. We praise him, seek his aid, his assistance, his mercy, and his guidance. We greet you with degrees of peace, as-salam aleikum. That is the peace that God gives, peace beyond to you. We have been here for an economic summit, economic symposium, striving for economic dignity. We've been praying for a lot of years. Now we want some results of that, monetary results. So this is an economic summit program as well, and those were the last thing that our beloved Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King was making his last few speeches. So we say, "Lord, as we gather here today for this historic event, participating in this economic summit, striving to make Newark a model city, I call you to mine a number of verses from the Holy Quran." Allah says in Quran, "Abesawata wala." He frowned and he turned away. Yes, many people frowned and turned away from Newark, Lord. They plan, and Allah plans, and Allah is the best of planners. Allah has decreed that one from amongst us, born and raised in Newark, a product of Newark, be raised for the occasion and lead this city into prosperity. We are praying for the Honorable Mayor Raz J. Baraka to continue in his vision. We are praying to share in this victory and share his success and share his vision. Now, under the leadership of the Honorable Mayor Raz J. Baraka, Lord, we are here to witness over $2 billion worth of development in the pipelines. And you say in the Quran, "Nothing is omitted." So there's something in the Quran about Newark. What does God say? He says in the Quran in chapter 34, the chapter called Sheba, the Queen of Sheba, "Between them and the cities on which we have poured forth blessings, we have placed cities in prominent positions, and between them we have appointed stages of journeys in due proportion, travel therein secure by night and by day." We are praying for the prominence of Newark and its safety and its security by night and day. Oh Allah, the Creator of the heavens and the earth, orders between above and beyond. We thank you, because you told us that if we are grateful, you will give us more. This is what you tell us in the Quran. We are striving to keep the balance between developing the soul and the soil. We want to develop the soil and see big buildings come up, but we want our souls to go up with those buildings in a righteous way. And God says in the Quran, "Ya ala diina amnu alaikum infusikum." Oh you who believe, be respectful of your souls. So we are respectful, Allah, of our souls. We are developing spiritually and materially simultaneously. I conclude with this prayer, the number one supplication that Muslims make on the pilgrimage to Mecca. While circling the Kaaba, the house that was built by Adam, our father Adam, and rebuilt by our father Abraham and his son Ishmael. The one supplication, the number one supplication that we make when we go on around that Kaaba is this. Rabbanah anttiina fidunia hasanaten wafi akiraj hasanaten waqita athabinnat. Our Lord, grant to us the good things in this life and the good things in the next life, and protect us from the punishment of the fire. As we duplicate Haggor, the mother of Ishmael, walking and running between Maua and Safar mountains, the number one supplication that she made, Rabbanah anttiina fidunia hasanaten wafi akiraj hasanaten waqita athabinnat. Our Lord, grant to us the good things in this life and the good things in the next life, and protect us from the torment of the fire. Oh Allah, bless this city, we ask you. Bless the Honorable Mayor Raz J. Baraka. Bless the honorable City Council people led by our beloved Councilwoman Mildred Crump. Bless the City Planning Board. Bless the schools from preschool all the way to the universities. Allah, we understand whosoever controlled our children's education controls our future. Thank you for giving us local control. Oh Allah, bless the Police Department and the Fire Department and all the other departments. Bless its citizens and its visitors. Ameen. As-salam aleikum.
Okay, I think we had some people join us, right? The Honorable Raz J. Baraka is in the house. Our U.N. Ambassador for the decade of African descent and much more, Danny Glover is in the house. Moving right along. The occasion. And I'm gonna be quick with this occasion. I just want to remind people, how many of you, you were here for State of the Black World Conference Number Four? All right, okay, great. Hosted right here. And we did that intentionally, by the way. That was not by accident. And by the way, we had the most effective, most dynamic, most energetic planning committee of anywhere we've ever had a State of the Black World Conference, right here in Newark. They did an incredible job. We came to Newark because, again, of the legacy and the history of this city. And because we embraced the policies that were being advanced by a progressive African-American mayor. And in our sessions today, one pointed out that not every mayor, you know, just tell no lies, tell no, claim no easy victories, not every African-American mayor is progressive. Now that doesn't mean that they're bad, I'm just saying they're not necessarily progressive. But when we find mayors like Antoine Choque Wade Lumumba in Jackson, Mississippi, we find mayors like Mayor Raz Baraka, it behooves us to surround them. So that's why we came to Newark. But not only did we come to Newark, we said we'd be coming back to Newark. Because in our declaration of intent and call to action, we said, among other things, that this mayor had called for an urban marshal plan, a domestic marshal plan. We knew that others had done likewise. We said that we wanted to embrace that call. But we went a step further. We said that with all of the wealth of black America, its talent, its resources, what if we decided to focus those resources intentionally on a particular city? That that could have potentially miraculous, powerful kinds of consequences. And so we talked about the concept of Newark as model city, but we also wanted to bring, therefore, from all across this country, some of the brightest and best minds to provide technical assistance if needed, to supplement, not tell people, to supplement and complement, to exchange ideas. But also people who might want to invest, who might want to partner with what's going on in this city. And I'm telling you, it's exciting. I'm getting ready to move to Newark. I mean, this is like, this stuff is getting excited up in here. When I talk to, when I talk to director, I mean, acting director, excuse me, sir, acting director Carmelo Garcia, I'm ready to roll. I'm excited about what's happening in Newark. So that's the backdrop. That's why we're here, because we believe in Newark, we believe in the Honorable Raz J. Baraka in terms of what he personifies, and we are going to continue. We're going to continue until we've achieved the objectives that we've set out. So now what I want to quickly do is do some acknowledgements, because we want you to know, folks who've come from around the country to be with you today. When I call your names, and there'll be some who had to leave, but I want those who are here to just stand when I call your names, whether you're in the audience or on the stage. Randall Pinkett is no stranger, he's here. Stand, remain standing, remain standing. And y'all can hold your applause. And he's, of course, brilliant brother. He's the CEO of BCT Partners and winner of the NBC's Apprentice when it made sense to do the Apprentice. And by the way, to his credit, he made it clear that he's not with the orange man. He made that clear. Not here, but who was here recently, she had to go back, was the Rachael Morgan Sissier. She is the analyst for the office of Mayor Karen Freeman. She's not, wasn't able to be with us. Stay, stay, stay standing, stay standing. You're a young brother, you can stand for a while. Michael Roberts is here, Chairman and CEO of the Roberts Company from St. Louis, Missouri. Doctor, and that's Dr. Michael Roberts, by the way. He's owned like 14 hotels, radio stations. He is on Black Enterprises multi-billion dollar, I don't want to make him too rich, but he'd be heavy, right? Dr. Tungaleesi Sanieka, who's the community and economic development pioneer. Dr. Charlene Sinclair, Director of Reinvestment for the Center for Community Change. Clement Sinclair, who is a Program Associate for Center for Community Change. Stephen J. Smith, Executive Director of the Public Policy Institute, the National Rainbow Coalition. Dr. H. Hada Stanford, the Director of Neighborhood and Business Development from Philadelphia. Shango Tahaa, Senior Committee Economic Development Planner and Kamasi Development Associate from Washington, DC. Reverend Dr. Jonathan Weaver, founder of the Collective Empowerment Group from Baltimore. Kyle Williams, Director of the Financial and Housing Policy, the National Urban League. Dr. Zachary Williams, Professor of African-American History, University of Akron, and the Coordinator of IBW's Resource Consortium. Did I get everyone? I think I missed a page. Let me go back up in here. Hold on, hold on, we'll get them all. Oh, by the way, he's not here, but we had Dr. Bernard Anderson here, the Whitney M. Young Professor of Management and Emeritus at the Wharton School of, University of Pennsylvania. He's heavy, he was serious. Willie Barney, President and Facilitator of African-American Empowerment Network Omaha, I mean, Omaha, right? Juan Busby, National President of the National Black Chambers is in the house. Donald Cravens was here, Executive Director of National Urban League, Washington Bureau. He's not here, but give him some applause anyhow. Reverend Dennis Dillon is in house, Senior Pastor of the Rising Center in Brooklyn. Dr. Devin Fergus, Distinguished Professor of History at Black Studies at University of Missouri. He couldn't be here because his father's from Newark, and he just had to go meet his father and say hello to him while he was here, but give him a... Dr. Ashani Frazier, Associate Professor of History, University of Miami, Oxford, Ohio. David Harris, Executive Director of Charles Hamilton Houston Institute for Race and Justice, Harvard University, was here, let's give it to him anyhow. Byron Hobbs, Senior Organizer, Center for Community Change, is here. Chicago, Illinois, that is. Sep Hunter, Executive Director of Communities Creating Opportunity, Kansas City, Missouri, in Kansas, is here. Nataki Kamo, Small Business Development and Management Consultant is here, from DC. Willard Lett, Community Economic Development Practitioner from Manchester, New Hampshire. So he come up there, for there ain't many black people up there, but he's here. Don Maxwell, former Executive Director of the Prospect Business Association from Kansas City, Missouri, is here. Chaya Metta Policy Center for Community Change in Chicago, Illinois, is in the house. I think I got them all. I think I got them all, if I missed any, forgive me, but let's give them all a big round. These are the people who've come to support Newark. These are the people who have come to support Newark. Give them a big round of applause. All right. Now, we also just want to quickly give some other shout-outs, quickly, 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 to our esteemed President of City Council, the Honorable Mildred Crump. Let's give her a big round of applause. And one of the brothers who's here, humbled, he worked with us actually on the State of the Black World Conference. I hope he's still in the audience, he was here very early. But he's one of those unsung heroes, perhaps. He was early on doing incredible work here in the community. Reverend Henry Code, Code, I'm sorry, Cade, I'm sorry, Cade. A Central Presbyterian Church, is he still here? He was here earlier. He actually came, and he wanted to identify with this activity. Others who are in the house, it's the United Africa Congress has not arrived yet. It has a delegation that is coming. Barbara King, our dear beloved sister Barbara King. That's the African Commission. I think I saw Pam Africa in the house. Think I saw Frederica Bay in the house. And I'm sure there are others that will be able to acknowledge as we proceed with the program. In fact, I don't know whether he is here yet, but one of the persons who stepped forward to be helpful in terms of sponsorship is Brother Mike Dakota. I don't know if he's here yet, but we want to give him a shout-out anyhow. When he comes, we want to give him a big acknowledgement. We really appreciate that very, very much. Okay, now moving the program right along. We now have coming for a musical rendition, Professor Jakia Jackson of the Pleasant Grove Baptist Church here in Newark. Give it up for her.
My eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord. He is trampling out the vintage when the grapes of wrath are stored. He has loosed the faithful lightning of his terrible swift sword. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. In the beauty of the lilies, Christ was born across the sea with a glory in His bosom that transfigures you and me. As He died to make men holy, let us die to make men free. While God is marching on, we sing glory, glory, hallelujah. Come on, you can sing it with me. Oh, glory, glory, hallelujah. Oh, glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. One more time, say glory, glory, hallelujah. Oh, glory, glory, hallelujah. Singing glory, glory, hallelujah.
All right, all right, that's a very good movement up in here. Now, we selected that song because as you remember, you may recall, Dr. King ended his mountaintop speech with a reference to the Battle Hymn of the Republic. So that was an intentional selection, and let's give it up for her again. It was a beautiful rendition that you did. And now we have two presenters who are going to bring succinct remarks on King's journey for economic justice and its relevance to black America today. And I say succinct because we're moving the program along, and I had them pass me a microphone up here, so when I tap that microphone, that means, don't get, you know, just because y'all know I will step, you know, so be succinct, right? Because we got a whole program to get done this evening. Two incredible people. Nataki Kambon is co-founder of Let's Buy Black 365, Senior Consultant of New Business Solutions from Washington DC. She is a dynamic sister. Followed by, and I forgive me because I gave the wrong chamber, and I don't want to disparage anything, but I'm glad I'm correcting this. Ron Busby is President and CEO of the US Black Chambers, which is distinguished from what I said previously, because there's a little difference in political orientation, I'll say that much. And so come, Nataki Kambon, give it up for her.
All right. In the tradition of our great African ancestors, I'd like to ask permission from an elder to speak. Madassi and Asante Sana, and thank you, depending on from where you are. Again, my name is Nataki Kambon, and although I was raised in North Carolina, I was actually born right up the road in Brooklyn, New York, so it's nice to be kinda home. I'm honored to be here tonight. I know we have a short period of time, so I had this whole presentation presented, and Dr. Daniels said, you gotta abbreviate. But I'm honored to be here as we commemorate the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, and as the co-founder and national spokesperson of the Let's Buy Black 365 Movement, definitely want to welcome all of you from Ghana, West Africa, I want to say, Aqaba. But I bring with you, or bring to you greetings from the organizers, the activists, the business owners, the students, and all of the members of the Let's Buy Black 365 Movement who are in spirit with you today, because this is the culmination of several years of work to create the black economic empowerment that we are always talking about. In November 2016, I had the honor of convening and facilitating, excuse me, the economics plenary for the State of the Black World IV. And what was most striking to me about that is that it wasn't just a conference. The Institute of the Black World and Dr. Daniels was very clear on the directive that we cannot just have a conference and leave and go home with a good feeling. We needed to take that call to action and organize around it and create real, sustainable change in the black community. And so over the last few years, there has been a strong contingent of individuals who participated in that, who have worked on a plan to do just that. One thing I did want to note and remark is that in January, we did a call to action where we asked people to not just celebrate Dr. King's birthday by marching and demonstrating and going to events, but we asked people to live Dr. King's legacy through living his mountaintop speech message of economic empowerment and living the message to economically withdraw from entities that do not support our communities and to redirect our dollars not just to black-owned businesses in terms of black faces, but the committed black-owned businesses that are interested in reinvesting in building community. And although that message was echoed 50 years ago, when we put that call to action out, I would remark that one of the things that strikes me most is not what happened in January, but what happened in the black community and black world in February. Because surprisingly enough, in the middle of February, there was a phenomenon that happened. And that phenomenon was that a film was released, and millions and millions of black people took millions and millions of dollars and took them to a movie theater to watch a film about a fictitious black nation that had fictitious wealth, resources, and superhero-like powers to do amazing things for their people. And what is most striking about that is not that we took money that we could aggregate for black liberation or aggregate against a system of racism and white supremacy, but what strikes me most is that we are so desperately starved to see our people rise, that we will do it even if it means seeing it on a film screen produced by people who don't even like us. So what excites me about being here today is that in the convening of the symposium that took place earlier, in the convening of the town hall that's taking place right now, the history that you are a part of here is the Institute of the Black World. Dr. Daniels has assembled a group of black experts, black leaders, community builders, city planners, mayors, and activists who are all ready to put our best and our brightest together so that we don't have to think about fictitious cities, we actually can create real model cities with black people and black resources. And I think that's something we need to get excited about. So in close, before I go, I just want to share that one of the things that I'm excited to share that the Let's Buy Black 365 Movement is bringing to this conversation is in, earlier this year, we came up with a plan for how we were going to join both the business community and our local communities. And we launched an initiative where we put forward a million dollars of resources to help black-owned businesses grow from the mom-and-pop, small-business level to the enterprise level to create legacy businesses. Yeah, we need to clap for that. Because one thing that we know and that we recognize is when we have legacy businesses, those businesses have the ability to change everything in our daily lives. They have the ability to influence policy. They have the ability to create jobs and allow people to own housing and allow people to have some reprieve from a system that may not be, or that is not for them, and create a system that is for them from within. So with that, I'm excited that the Let's Buy Black 365 Movement is a part of this conversation about a model city and how we can bring businesses that are not, again, not just black-owned, but committed black-owned businesses by those who have the consciousness about what communities look like when they're created with an intergenerational ideology in mind and created with the knowledge and understanding that as we grow wealth, we also need to help our communities mend the psychological trauma that has happened from hundreds of years of racism and white supremacy. We also need to build on models of intergenerational sustainability. And with that, I will, I see Dr. Daniels standing here. So with that, I just want to leave you, I want everybody to chant with me. We have a mantra that we say at Let's Buy Black, because we forget that we each as individuals have so much power to create the change that we want. So say this with me. I am the resource my people need.
I am the resource my people need.
I am the solution.
I am the solution.
I am the Let's Buy Black 365 Black Economic Empowerment Movement. I am the Let's Buy Black 365 Black Economic Empowerment Movement. Thank you, Madassi.
Well, I'm not going to ask y'all to repeat anything, so you can, good afternoon or good evening. I am truly honored to be here. Thank you, Mr. Daniels, as well as the panelists. Again, my name is Ron Busby. I'm the President and CEO of the US Black Chambers. A lot of people are talking about Dr. King's death 50 years later, and many of us have heard his mountaintop speech, and it starts at 13 minutes going forward. We don't really talk about the first 13 minutes of his speech. The first 13 minutes of his speech goes a little something like this, and I know a lot about our leader, Reverend Jesse Jackson, because in that speech, Dr. King looks back and says, Jesse, what's the name of that bread company? And Jesse says, it's Wonder Bread. And Dr. King says, we gonna stop buying Wonder Bread. He leans back and he says, Jesse, what's the name of that cola company? And Jesse says, that's Coca-Cola. And he says, we gonna stop buying Coca-Cola. Danny, I'm from Oakland, California, and I'm really honored to be here. You see, I grew up in a two-parent household. My mother was a teacher as well as a minister, so I'm well-educated, I know who my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is. Hold on. Because I also was blessed enough to have a father, and my father was an entrepreneur, but he was also a Black Panther. So I'm about business, and I don't take no shit. The US Black Chamber was founded in 2009, and when we started, we had six chambers. Today, we have 135 chambers, we're in 31 states, and we have a membership base of over 293,000 Before starting the US Black Chamber, I lived in Phoenix, Arizona, and while I was in Phoenix, I had the opportunity to live in a city where there was only 3% black population. In 2002, I was married with two sons, and on July the 7th, 2002, my wife died. Left me with two young boys, five and six years old, and I prayed, Lord, I feel like Satchel Paige. I know I got one more inning in me, and if you give me the opportunity, I promise you, Lord, I won't let you down. Kyle and I was just talking a little while ago, and he said, man, how do you stay single? And I say, well, I moved to Washington DC with two of my sons and started the US Black Chamber, and I am all about the mission of our organization. You see, we were based on five key pillars. Hold up, because I know Mr. Daniels is going to ask me to stop for a moment. You see, our first one was advocacy, and when I moved to Washington DC, I was driving down the road, and I looked on the back of our license plate, and it literally reads taxation without representation. And for African-American business owners, that's who we have been. We have been paying into a system that does not represent our best interest. When I first moved into my office in Washington DC, literally right across the office, right across the hall from me, was the Sugar Beach Growers Policy Organization. Everybody's got somebody representing their best interest, except for black business owners, until now. Our second, our second issue is access to capital. You see, there's a lot of conversation about e-commerce, but that's not us talking about e-commerce, because you see, 40% of African-Americans don't have a bank account. We don't have credit cards. And so we're talking about getting into the new commerce, it's leaving us out. Without credit, I can't get an Uber. Without credit, I can't get a Southwest Airlines ticket, or rent a hotel, or rent a car. You see, the new commerce is about having the ability to exchange via, without cash, and it's leaving African-Americans out. I was watching the NCAA Football Championship, and 21 times Samuel L. Jackson said, what's in your wallet? What's in your wallet? You see, the average African-American is paying more than 20%, 19.8% for credit, and have to have a 650 credit score to apply. That's keeping most of us out of the game. The US Black Chambers has partnered with our black banks around the country to provide a credit card for African-Americans with credit scores as low as 570, let me say it again, for credit scores as low as 570 with an interest rate as low as 9.96% interest. That's how we deal with the solution of consumer credit, but I deal with business owners. And so we went back to the SBA and said, that's great for up to $10,000, but if I'm a business owner, I need 50, 60, maybe even $100,000. And so we were able to convince, no, we were able to advocate to the SBA to now provide up to a 50% guaranteed loan, up to $100,000. The largest challenge that we have is collateral, because we know, and a lot of folk have been talking about it over this last couple of days, we lost our homes when the recession hit. So we don't have the collateral that we once had, but now through a black-owned bank, you can get the funds that you need to start your business. And our third one is contracting. Let me say this real quick, because you see, a lot of folk have been talking about the trillion dollars that we have. But that ain't black folk talking about the trillion dollars. That's white folk talking about, we got a trillion dollars, how can we get their piece of the game? Our conversation is, how do we keep that trillion dollars in our community? And so I'm happy to say that we have opportunities like Buy Black 360, but I also have a mobile credit, I have a mobile app with 107,000 black-owned businesses in there. You can no longer say, I don't know where you are, because it will tell you when you get close to it, it will ping you. I have 36 different categories, it's GPS-driven, so anywhere you go in America, Africa, Brazil, or the continent of America, you can find black-owned businesses that you can spend your money. We monitor what the government is doing, what corporate America is doing, and most importantly, what are we doing? I'm sorry, I know. Our fourth one is tribal renewal training. I graduated from two HBCUs. I went to undergrad at Florida A&amp;M where we strike and strike and strike again, and I went to Clark Atlanta University Graduate School, but there will be more African-Americans that will graduate this year from one university versus all of our HBCUs combined, and that will be the University of Phoenix. A lot of folks will be like, ah. Or we can say, let's join them, because you see, the challenge is, and I'm in DC where we have HBCUs, they're monitored on the old system, and that is butts in seats. As a business owner, I'm not going to go to a college. I got too much work to do. I gotta take care of my children, I gotta make bills. A lot of us have gone to college four, five, six years and never graduate. We have partnered with the University of Phoenix to give you online training. We have partnered with the University of Phoenix to give you online training to be able to make you a better business owner. Thank you very much. Last thing I want to say, a lot of folk have been talking about making America great again. We believe in making America great again as well, but in order for there to be a great America, there's gotta be a great black America. And in order for there to be a great black America, there's gotta be great black businesses. And in order for there to be great black businesses, they need you. They need you to get off of the dime and spend money with them. They need you to stop asking for the homie hookup, pay the people the pop, the prices that they need so they can hire additional folk. Thank you very much, good night.
All right. Ron Busby. We got some great folks now. They could go, I mean, you know, I'm just, we're just giving you a taste. These people are going to continue to be linked to Newark, by the way, so they'll be back, but you know, we're just giving you a, the appetizer tonight, because we're going to do the main course as we move forward. Honored to see that our Paramount Chief has honored us with his presence. Our Paramount Chief is none other than Dr. Leonard Jeffries is in the house. Dr. Leonard Jeffries is in the house. That's right, I'm with it. Also with him is Dr. Akil Kafani. Dr. Kafani, thank you for joining us this evening as well. And so now, as we get ready to hear from our keynote presenter for this evening, we want to introduce that by way of another musical selection, and that selection will be rendered by evangelist Ruby Annette Evans, who's with the Province Music Group from here in Newark. Would you give her a big round of applause as she comes?
I'm in heels this evening, so I'll do what I usually do and take them off. I give honor to God, to this distinguished panel, panelists, to my mayor, to none other than the president of the council, my dear sister that I love so very much, to the, I see some of my other friends, and I say hi, and I say hi, to my sister Salimu, I just love you so very much. I was asked to do this particular song, and it meant so much, and I was reading the words earlier this afternoon, and I said, gee, you know, I know when I first heard this from the musical Man La Mancha, but more than that, it tells a wonderful story in words. So I will say to you, my sisters and my brothers, let's listen to the words, not so much what, how the voice may sound, but the beauty of the word. To dream the impossible dream, to fight the unbeatable foe, to bear with unbearable sorrow, to run where the brave dare not go, to right the unrightable wrong, to love pure and chaste from afar, to try when your arms are too weary, to reach the unreachable star. This is my quest to follow that star, no matter how hopeless, no matter how far, to fight for the right without question or pause, to be willing to march into hell for heavenly cause, and I know if I only be true to this glorious quest, that my heart will be peaceful and calm when I lay to my rest, and the world will be better for this, that one man scorned and covered with scars still strove with his last ounce of courage, to reach, to reach, Sing this with me.
We gotta give the piano some. Pastor Jerry Williams, he playing it. Right, give the piano some. Pastor Jerry Williams. And we thank, again, Reverend Louise Scott Roundtree, because I went to her, because you know, we, we vibing now since the State of the Black World Conference. I said, we need two people to sing, so she said, I got it. Did she have it? Let's give it up again for these two dynamic soloists. Let's give it up for them. Tremendous. And so now, brothers and sisters. Yeah, there's a car, HCU 4655. New York Plates, you better move, or it will be moved. HCU 4655, uh, has to be moved. All right. All right. Okay, now, is everybody all right? Are we having a good time? Are we celebrating Newark? All right, that's what we're here for. And so now, it's my distinct honor to introduce our keynote presenter. He really needs no introduction. He is recognized for his work throughout the globe. It is not by accident that he has been appointed to be the UN Ambassador for the Decade of African Descent. He's like a blur, constantly on the move, indefatigable. In fact, you know, we, we worry about him, but he just keeps moving because he's committed. Back from the days when he was a student at San Francisco State University, helping to create the Black Studies Movement, people like Sonia Sanchez. He's an actor of great significance. I was with somebody the other day, and he said, oh, is that Danny Glover? I remember him. Yeah, that's Danny Glover. But acting does not define Danny Glover. That's not who Danny Glover is. Danny Glover has always been about serving his people. And so the other day, I heard he was in Venezuela, dealing with the issue of African descendants there. Couple of weeks before that, I was trying to catch up with him, and he was in Honduras, Costa Rica, uh, moving through those, Guatemala, moving through those countries. And so now, he's back in the country, and he's coming into us now from Newark, where they asked for him. They needed him, they wanted him to be there because of what he represents. He will spend the night with us, and then early in the morning, he's off to Washington, DC. That's Danny Glover. That's Danny Glover. And he don't show up just for anybody. He shows up for those persons and policies that he believes in, that advance the vision of those things that he holds dear to his heart and those things for which he has dedicated his life, and he is dedicated. He's one of the most remarkable human beings we have among us, a treasure for people of African descent. In the spirit of Paul Robeson, he didn't like me to say that, but I just can't otherwise, it's been branded. He's in the spirit of Paul Robeson. Would you please welcome our keynote presenter, Danny Glover, UN Ambassador for the, of African descent, actor, activist, and humanitarian, Danny Glover?
To the city of Newark, New Jersey, the honorable mayor, Roz Baraka. And to those city officials who served this city as it navigates its way through its own transformative process, I want to thank you, all those from Dr. Leonard Jeffries, to everyone here, I see so many people here, and, and I'm, I'm glad that, and I have the opportunity to be with you and to talk about, I think, so many things. There's never enough time to, to talk, you know what I'm saying? His young sister, his young brother up here had something to talk about, and we didn't have enough time for them, you know? Because this moment that we have here, this moment recognizing Dr. King's legacy, his untimely death 50 years ago tomorrow, a moment where we find to gather our senses, to gather ourselves, to find ways in which we, we carry on that, him being that symbol in that moment of what was just and what was to do, what we had to do, the work set out to do. We remember that he was organizing sanitation workers in Memphis, Tennessee, men who stood up and said, I am a man. We realized that he was doing that at that, at that critical moment in the organizing, organizing of the strike itself and the participation and, and the heroism of those men who stood up as well. We also realized that he was down in Alabama just a few days before, talking to sharecroppers in Alabama. He had moved across the country, talking to sharecropper, talking to poor people, black, white, Hispanic, Native Americans, Asian, in the service of organizing a Poor People's March. Sometimes we have to put all the dots together to understand where we translating this. We know that a year before, on April 4th, 1967, he gave the speech that most people feel was his, his death sentencing beyond Vietnam. There he took his triplets of racism, militarism, and materialism, and said, this is the, this is the, this is robbing the moral spirit of this country. This capitalism, this system that had come into existence at the beginning of the 19th century, one based on plantation capitalism, that's what it is. We know that. Within 40 years, at, at, within the first 40 years of this country's existence, it became the most wealthiest country in the world, from 1800 to 1840, the most wealthiest country in the world. Built on the blacks, the slaves, built on their backs, created on their backs. So we, 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 we look at this, all this, this, an amazing information, and we look at ourselves right here in the age of, I don't say return of racism, but the blatant existence of it, the realization that it never did go away, the realization that we still had battles to fight, the realization that, that we have to, to determine where we stand on the issues of justice, where we stand on the issues that affect all of us, humanity itself, right here. We sit in here looking at not only black people, but humanity itself. And while King talked about that, he knew, he knew that his purpose and his mission and his, was to save the soul of this country. I think about this moment in terms of the work that's here, the work that's being done, the intricate work. I'm one of those, I would just say, one of those young people who came to the Model Cities Program in the Office of Community Development in 1971, with all the, it's great ideas, all the ideas of transforming, empowering people, empowering communities, and transforming those communities in there. I came to that, that moment in San Francisco, California, little did I know that there was another plan in place, and whether those plan, that plan had the, had the approval, stamp of approval by black politicians or not, it was in place. It was called gentrification. It had been called redevelopment when I was in, at the Western Edition Community Organization in 1966, as a 20-year-old young man just attending to find out what was happening to a traditionally black neighborhood, the Fillmore, the Fillmore that I lived in, the Fillmore that I grew up in, I just saw that change overnight. People were disempowered, to the point now that the population of black San Francisco, you can take the whole population of every black person in San Francisco, put them in Pac Bell Park, which sees 43,000 people, and you won't fill the park up. That's what has happened. They've been moved to the outskirts. So taking all this into consideration, taking all this into consideration, the role that we play as citizens, the role that we play as elected officials, the role that we play in community building, building businesses is essential. Community businesses in the past wasn't Starbucks, community business was businesses that were connected to what was happening in the community. If there was a strike in the community, they were involved in the strike. If there was some uprising in the community, they were involved, they weren't absent, they were absent from what was happening in those communities. So if we talk about this moment, and this realize in this moment, in this moment where we saw enormous, we saw the Great Recession and the impact it had, not only on black people, but specifically, specifically, black women. Black women were the hardest hit by the, the housing fallout, and we have to realize all these things as we move into developing our narrative. What is our narrative? What is the narrative that we're going to talk about? It's going to include the work that you're doing right here, but there's going to be but there's going to be a semblance of other ideas as well that would nurture us and nurture us in a different way. We don't know what those ideas are. We don't have any idea because imagination is extraordinary. Our imagination and our ability to transform, to make those things happen as individuals collectively, as citizens. What we're doing, when we do that, that's what we're talking about. So, we're talking about a number of things here. We know what the Marshall Plan was. We know about the Marshall Plan, how it rebuilt Europe. The United States was the only economy left intact after World War II. So, what it did was, it created for the United States and US plantation capitalism. This is what it created. It created the golden years of US capitalism, from 1945 to 1975. That's what the Marshall Plan was built on that. Not only rebuilding Europe, you were also rebuilding Japan as well and the rest of the world. So, establish a new set of wealth in this country. By the end of World War II, seventy-five percent of the wealth was owned by the United States. Right now, over seventy-five percent of the wealth is owned by corporations. That's the reality in that sense. It determines whether it wants to destabilize a small government or determines whether it wants to destabilize a city. It does all of that. And when we think about those ideas, take in consideration the march that we have, the journey that we've been on. Like I said, I came with the Model Cities Program. What did the Model Cities Program do? It provided all of us who were graduating from college, who were the baby boomers, an opportunity, a job. Not unlike in 1948, when my mother and father came to the post office. How many people in here, parents, cousins, daddy, mama, everybody worked at the post office, almost everybody around the country? We had somebody who was connected to the post office. It provided this bridge for those who were assimilating, who had been victimizing, and also who had been disenfranchised an opportunity to get into the idea of the quote-unquote "American dream" or whatever. So, those things happened. So, it did that. It provided that space. King understood clearly. In his speech on April 4th, 1967, he said clearly, when he talked about the war in Vietnam, how it was eviscerating, and he used eviscerating the anti-poverty programs, the war on poverty, as he said. Those monies didn't go for that. They were going for killing Vietnamese. That money should be designated for what we needed to do, what needed to happen, what really needed to happen in this country in terms of doing justice and doing right by African Americans was now finding itself wasted upon war. We see the same thing happen today. In fact, he had gone to the office, the Budget of Office of Affairs, and came up with a number, a number in terms of how much it would take to do justice to African Americans, former slaves, in that plantation capitalism itself. So, we understand that it could be done. We saw it done in Europe. We saw what happened in Europe, where it raised the levels of healthcare, the Marshall Plan. It rebuilt the whole structure. In fact, you almost want to think that they bombed and devastated everything in order to suddenly get rebuilt it and use that as a platform in order to increasing their power and increasing their wealth. So, what is that narrative that we need to talk about? How does that narrative involve committed elected officials? These men and women here, the mayor here, committed for real change. How do we find, not only that, how do we find our international bridge with other countries and other communities as well? How do we build those relationships with what's happening? You look at Brazil, you have the landless movement, MST. The landless movement in Brazil has placed significantly over four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand families on abandoned land. That's over one point, one point four or five million people that they've placed on land. How do we connect with them? Because it's a narrative there. It's a narrative for transformation as well. So, as we talk about this, what is the narrative for transformation? You know, I was in Venezuela. As Venezuela was last week celebrating, commemorating the one-hundred-and-sixty-fourth year since the abolition of slavery. Now, you count that, that had to be in 1854. When did the US abolish slavery? 1863, January 1st, 1863. That's when they abolished it. At least, the decree came out there. But we know what happened after that, and subsequently, what happened with that. So, on the one hand, I was in a community called Balavento. Balavento, primarily African-descended communities. It grew its own cocoa. It took that cocoa and made chocolate with it, and it built a viable community there with relationships that went beyond just the making of chocolate itself. With relationships that were much larger than that. They had begun process of transformation. King always talked about, what is the road to transformation? What is the pathway to transformation? Not simply that we have a job, not simply that we have a suggestive in what we do in terms of our business, but what is that transformation? What is that process for transformation? We need more and more to talk about that, to add that as leverage in what we do as work. For the work that we do now, in the legacy of King, of all those fathers, all those who have left us, all those who have given so much of their own time, sacrificing everything else, what does that transformation look like? And how do we create a world that works? A city that works for all of us? Not only a city that works for all of us, but a state that works for all of us, and et cetera, et cetera. That is our task. We have to find that narrative, and it's a dynamic narrative. The contradictions have changed, whether they are. Even though we see the manifestation of Trump, and we pay a lot of attention to what he's tweaking and everything else, the real transformation went long before Trump came into power. What was happening, what were the changes that were happening? The reinstitution of racism, the breakdown of the society itself, the breakdown of all those things that the New Deal brought. The New Deal brought all these particular things, put them into place. And every moment since then, it's been attempted to undermine it. The voting rights side, all those things that dissuade us to be real citizens and active citizens in our own rescue. Active citizens in our own rescue. So, that narrative has to include that as well. So, these are moments that we have to take serious, to think out, find ways to collaborate with all aspects of hear, listen, grow, and build. Thank you so much.
Danny Glover! Danny Glover! Whew, boy. It's getting gooder and gooder. Wow, you know what I mean? I want to acknowledge delegation from the United African Congress, led by the national spokesperson for that organization that has come over from New York as a part of the Pan-African Unity Dialogue that we convened, the Honorable Sadiq Y, and the representatives of the United Africa Congress. Sadiq Y is in the House. So, now, we want to have our panel discussion. I need a watch. My watch stopped, and so I gotta, somebody gotta provide me with a watch so I know what our timing is, because we don't want to hold you too long. But we do want to hear from these brilliant folks who have assembled in terms of having a conversation. And it will be a conversation. We're going to ask them to respond to particular questions. And, you know, if they get the Holy Ghost like Ron Busby did, I'll have this, I'll vote. You know what I mean? That means, you know, you know what that represents, right? And again, among the things that we're attempting to do is to talk about Newark. But beyond Newark is how do we replicate a process that can transform not only black America, but at the heart of it is black America, but also transform this nation? That's about, and we have that capacity, and that's what we're talking about. And so, I want to begin with our two Newark residents, and with all the pop people standing up in the House. You know, you got Chairman Hammond. Pop People's Organization for Progress. Know y'all be showing out. All the pop people in the House, be popping up. All right? So, we ask you to be crisp in your responses. And I wanted to start it with you, Larry Hamm, and then subsequently with Pastor Ronald Slaughter, whom I had the privilege of meeting today. I heard so much about him in terms of the work that he's doing. So, I want you to share with our visiting resource people who are here your perspective on the progress that's being made here in Newark, but also the challenges. You know, in terms of what the challenges are in terms of the effort to make Newark a model city under the leadership of the Honorable Ross J. Baraka. So, again, my question is, you know, to share, you know, because they want to hear from you. You're our local panelist. What are, again, some of your perspectives on the progress that's being made, but also the challenges? Because it's never easy. It's never like without some contradiction. So, oh, I need the microphones. Where are the microphones at? The microphone's up here? Let's get the mics up. All right, now, we're gonna get them to you. I'm sorry, I had to, I didn't want y'all to get started too soon, so. We got a preacher and got, Larry Hamm's a preacher too, so. All right, y'all wanna, you want to test yours? Oh, you're good to go. So, Larry Hamm, start us off.
Power to the people. First of all, let us give Dr. Ron Daniels and the Institute for the Black World Twenty-First Century give him a big hand for having this economic forum. And I must say, in the interest of full disclosure, because I don't want anybody to be under any illusions as to where I stand, I just want to say that the People's Organization for Progress, we endorse the candidacy of Ross Baraka in 2014. And the People's Organization for Progress endorses the candidacy of Ross Baraka and his entire team in 2018. I, we stand forever in the vortex of history. And as our beautiful singer was giving, rendering the impossible dream, I can remember being in West Kenny Junior High School in the fall of 1971, when we were preparing for the National Black Political Convention. And we had the Essex County Black Political Convention at West Kenny Junior High School. And Congressman Fauntroy from Washington DC was the guest speaker. And that night, he sang "Dream the Impossible Dream." And here we are today, and now, the son of the man that convened the National Black Political Convention is the mayor of the city of Newark.
So, now, you have three minutes to answer the question.
That was my three minutes, right? Let me just say quickly on the question of economic development that we're having this forum today is fortuitous because yesterday was the anniversary, in fact, the fiftieth anniversary of the passage of the Economic Cooperation Act by Congress in 1948, which created the Marshall Plan. So, it's right, it's been seventy years since 1948, when the Marshall Plan was created.
It's actually tonight, it's today.
No, April 2nd is when Congress passed it. Congress passed the Economic Cooperation Act, April 2nd, 1948. But the point I'm trying to make is this, that the Marshall Plan enabled the rebuilding, and not just the rebuilding, the revitalization of Europe after the devastation of World War II. They had a Marshall Plan in 1948. We need an urban Marshall Plan for our cities in 2018. And what that means, and I fully support all self-help efforts, but we have to be clear on what the Marshall Plan was. The Marshall Plan was the investment of billions of dollars of public funds into the economic development of Europe. And we need, instead of spending a trillion dollars on wars in Iraq, Afghanistan, and Syria, we need to use that trillion for an urban Marshall Plan for our cities and to revitalize Newark, New Jersey. So, I think that the administration of Ross Baraka has put us on the right path. But it's gonna be a difficult path because the development of a city takes place within the parameters of the American capitalist system. And that system is designed, in fact, to impede our growth and development. So, while we do the best as we can at the local level, having the best government that we can possibly get, having the best administration of our city, we have to do what Dr. King challenged us to do at the end of his life. And I urge everybody, when they leave here today, to read his fifth book, "Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos or Community?" And in the chapter, the ninth chapter, titled "The World House", Dr. King said that we need a radical redistribution of power and wealth in this country and that we need a radical transformation of our socioeconomic system. We needed that in 1968, and we need it in 2018 because black people are in worse shape in this country in 2018 than we were when Dr. King was assassinated in 1968.
All right. My three minutes? Yeah, you came in on time. All right. So, Reverend Slaughter, you pastor a congregation. So, you have folk in the congregation who, you know, they're not necessarily interested in all the lofty speeches and all that. They want to know what, you know, Mr. Say Nothing, Mr. Do Is Everything. So, they want to know what's happening, what's going on. So, and you are yourself involved in doing some economic enterprises yourself. So, from where you sit, how do you see Newark's development plan unfolding? And what do you see as some of the challenges?
Well, first, thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this panel. It's kind of hard following Uncle Larry Hamm, but I do the best that I can. As it was said earlier, I was so happy to hear Brother Glover talk more about King's speech in Memphis than his speech in Washington. Because most of us have began to sanitize the life of Dr. King and relegated to nothing more than "I Have a Dream" speech, when he was much more than just that. In fact, when he talked about the need for housing and the economic epidemic in this country while he was in Chicago, and the need for blacks to have affordable housing and places to live, and also places to work in order to be on a level playing field. From a faith perspective and from a From a faith perspective and from a spiritual perspective, I believe you need faith and spirituality in order to bring about change in the community and transformation. And so along with partnering with our mayor and partnering with the city, we don't need more church buildings, we need more transformative centers. And that's what, if we listen carefully to what Stephon Clark's auntie was saying the other day on national television, and she was referring to a nephew who everybody's criticizing, because Stephon Clark's brother's running around and people have all types of things to say about him. And what she said is, "We need resource centers to get persons the help that they need in our urban and inner cities." And so I believe under our mayor's agenda, our mayor understands that we can build downtown, that's good, but he also believes that we must revitalize the urban communities and the blightedness in those communities. And so I have proudly partnered with our mayor to bring about that type of change in the inner city. And then finally, most of us have heard about Nehemiah, we've read something about Nehemiah. I just so happen to finish a complete dissertation on Nehemiah and the work of reviving the urban blighted areas of our community. I'm glad I'm graduating, I'm done with that doctoral piece next month. But in researching all of that and going through that, Nehemiah was more than just a spiritual personality. Nehemiah was a revitalizer. And when we only relegate him to being spiritual, we minimize his impact. In fact, scholar Walter Brueggemann once said to Nehemiah, "He's the greatest urban redeveloper that the world has ever seen." That implies Jerusalem was urban at the time that Nehemiah undertook that assignment. And because I preach everything from a black perspective, then Nehemiah's skin must have been darkened by Mother's nature's son, which means he was a brother that said to the government of Jerusalem, "You all contributed to this blightedness, you all need to help fund this blightedness, you need to help fund the turnaround in the city." So I believe the resources we talked about earlier in our sessions, that we must hold the government accountable. We talk about reparations, nobody have no problem with that. They have billions of dollars, and we need to make sure it is allocated to our inner cities, that we turn our inner cities around, and we follow the vision that our mayor has set before us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. I now like to turn to a friend who has come from the city of Philadelphia, Dr. H. Ahada Stanford. She's the Director of Neighborhood and Commercial Revitalization from Philadelphia. And I'd just like you, from your own experience, to share with our brothers and sisters here on the panel, but also brothers and sisters here from Newark, what lessons they might learn from the work that you're doing, you know, in Philadelphia? What lessons can you share that might be useful? Or maybe it's some of the difficulties, but whatever, in your own voice, please share that with us.
Well, this is a field trip for me, I'm learning.
Speak a little louder, you're so soft spoken.
This is a field trip for me, this is really a field trip. I absolutely am learning. And in fact, I've just been sitting here trying to absorb it all. It's just so absolutely wonderful. Maybe the last time I was here was with Mutongalisi and the Congress of African People folks, and Imamu Baraka, and talking about social organization, and we talked about cities, you know. But one of the things that gets lost in cities is where we live, our communities, our neighborhoods. That's where our assets are, that's where we grow the wealth of our families. And that's really very important. And so revitalizing downtown has gotten to be the thing. And it's happening, it's happening all over the country. But revitalizing neighborhoods is something that we have to make happen. And it will only happen when we make it happen. When we decide that it's important that to own those assets that are in our neighborhoods. When it's important to shop in our neighborhoods. It's important to grow businesses in our neighborhoods. And that's the kind of thing that I've been doing, and that's the kind of thing that my team does in Philadelphia. We go into commercial quarters, and there are CDCs there working doing housing, but we work in the commercial quarters, supporting the businesses, working with CDCs, planning, analyzing the real estate, doing development. And we'd love to see that happen here in Newark. And I know it's happening, but I think that we could probably share some lessons with you. And so I'm gonna keep trying to learn what I'm learning, so that I can share some lessons with people here in Newark.
Okay, how wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Willie Barney, you have traveled all the way from Omaha, Nebraska. I didn't even know there was black people in Omaha, Nebraska. Actually, that's where El-Hi's Malik El Shabazz was born. And I had the privilege in 1990 of being a part of what we call 1990, the year of Malcolm X, and we went to Newark for that purpose. Let me just say that Willie Barney, in my estimation, has put together, in the city of Omaha, one of the most phenomenal organizing economic and community development projects anywhere that I know. And I specialize in trying to find these things. So Willie, would you just share your sense of what you're doing in Omaha, and how it could be potentially helpful in terms of what's happening here in Newark?
I just first want to say that this is our time. It's not by accident that we're here at this time in this city. This is our time. And I say that because I am a full supporter of the Marshall Plan and the Model City here in Newark, because we rebuilt Europe, we rebuilt Japan, we're rebuilding Iraq, we might as well rebuild right here. And what's interesting is, I'll talk quickly about Omaha, but I'm so impressed by what I saw with the mayor and his administration, the state of the city. They know what to do, they need the resources to take it to scale and to accelerate the pace of the work that they're already doing. And so as much as we need a Marshall Plan, we also need a Montgomery Plan. And what I mean by that is, in Montgomery, the people engaged, they were educated, they empowered themselves, and then they pursued excellence in an economic sense. And so what we've been pursuing for the last 12 years in Omaha is bringing together people from different sectors, starting with us, engaging in the society, and then educating ourselves on where are the existing funds? Where are the dollars? How are they used at the city-state-county level, federal level? How do we reallocate strategically to make sure that we're using those resources in our own community first? That's where we start. And then we identified that we needed to have elected officials in place that supported that bigger community bottom-up vision. And that's where we have now three school board members. We have the city council president, we have the county commissioner, we have the Douglas County Treasurer, we have two state senators that are aligned to a community-based plan, which is being redeveloping in our own community. And so I'm here in support of the larger vision of a nationwide effort around the Marshall Plan. I'm in support of this mayor and the administration, of the work that they're doing here. And I just want to, the reason I say it's our time, it's not by accident that 50 years ago, the Kerner Report came back and said, "You have to invest at the scale of the problem." It's 50 years since Dr. King was taken from us. And now here we find ourselves in this very moment, and I'll share with you very quickly, in Omaha, using some of the very same plans that the mayor's administration has laid out, our graduation rate has gone from 50% to 81% to African-Americans. Our gun violence rate in the summer, when our kids have jobs, when our kids have jobs and positive activities, and they're working with the churches, our gun violence rate is down 80% in the summer months, when the kids are working. Graduation rates are up, gun violence is down, and we are now beginning to really marshal and align resources, collaboration, alignment, and strategic reinvestment. This is our time, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Dr. Charlene Sinclair, you're a native of Newark, and doing incredible work, you know, around the country. But you in the Center for Community Change are focusing on this question, and how we need to move. So share with us your sense of what work you're doing, and how it might in fact be helpful and instructive to what is happening here in Newark.
So, good evening. I am a native of Newark, it's wonderful to be home and to see this kind of energy and excitement. And I've been trying to figure out how to get back to Newark for decades. So this feels so good, so thank y'all for having me. But I'm a community organizer, that's what I do for a living. And that means that we get all into the business of what is disrupting the thriving of our people. And part of the work that we are doing around this country, and why I got into community organizing is as a native of Newark. I left Newark at 17, pregnant, trying to raise a kid. And somebody knocked on my door and said, "Why are you living in this roach-infested, rat-infested tenement?" And that's how I got into this work, transforming the place I lived in. And that led to me understanding that I needed to transform the city, the state, the country, and eventually the world. So part of what we need to be doing is to recognize that the local is also the national, is also the international. And so a lot of the work that our groups are doing is working deeply in communities with residents, actually building up projects and building up work on the basis of what those communities have determined that their needs are. So from the places in Missouri, where Seth is coming from, where they're looking at social determinants of health, and actually building a narrative, that the work that we're doing is not only about making life a little easier, but actually showing that the deep generational poverty that we are living in is actually resulting in the death of community members at 10 to 15 years than that of people in other zip codes. That's what we're dealing with. This is not just a narrative, a rhetoric. This is the reality of the fact that our people are dying as a result of this. So people are organizing around the country to actually take back infrastructure. In Detroit, they're actually working to make sure that the water infrastructure isn't bankrupted and taken and privatized, so that they can own the actual system, the water, the $1.3 trillion asset in that community can stay in that community. So in Ohio, they're working on a crime ballot initiative that will actually reduce felonies, not only because they're interested in criminal justice and keeping people out of prison, but a recognition that if you have a felony, you cannot get a job. If you are pouring money into the carceral system, you don't have money for schools. You don't have money for any kind of mental health, anything. So that's why they're doing that work. People are actually moving, and we're coalescing around an umbrella of black safety liberation, black thriving, black freedom. And so that's the work that we are moving forward. Now the challenges that we're facing, and I'm gonna use two examples for challenges, and then I'll be quiet. The first example, because I'm sitting between two men of the cloth, is what I tell myself, the place that I go to is actually the Book of Revelations. Book of Revelations, chapter 18, verses 11 through 13. People talk about verse 11, because they're talking about all these luxury goods, all that we create, just to sustain the materialism of the country, the materialism of the imperialist movement. And then it says, "And we also sell body and souls." And then people get upset, "Body and souls." But they never go to the next line, where the people that are crying are the merchants, the people that are actually getting their livelihood on this system. And so we need to be careful that when we're actually moving to make life better, we're not reinscribing, making, deepening, creating the very same systems that made our death in the first place. So we have to be careful about that. And the second quick example is, because this is Martin Luther King, we're celebrating, you know, his vision, and we're talking about his martyrdom towards that vision, remembering in that spirit also, that in the last retreat with SCLC, when he talked about the Poor People's Campaign, when he talked about economic redistribution, the people around him said, "Wait a minute." So while we're in this room, the question is, who will you be? Will you be the people that cry because your livelihood is now threatened, because we need to upturn this entire system? Or will you be the people that stand with King and say that we have to do the work, even to the point maybe of death for justice? Not just death to support capitalism?
Randall Pinkett, you from these Anverans from Newark, and you've been very successful, and you're a very committed and social entrepreneur, associated with the FrazierNet, Vice President of FrazierNet. Share your thoughts about, as you travel the world and what you're doing, how we can be of assistance to the city of Newark?
So there's a lot of income in our communities, but there's not a lot of wealth in our communities. I'm gonna say it again, somebody said that's true. There's a lot of income in our communities, there's not a lot of wealth in our communities. And I believe that if we're going to design a Marshall Plan for the city of Newark, that Marshall Plan has got to focus not on just creating greater income, but creating greater wealth in our communities, greater wealth. I've been a business owner, believe it or not, for about 25 years. I've been a business owner in Newark for the past 14 years. I moved my business from Plainfield, New Jersey to Newark in 2004, because we wanted to be a part of the economic transformation that was happening in Newark and has continued. And I gotta give credit to our mayor, Ross Baraka, who has really made moves in terms of a vision for how we can really economically empower the city of Newark. So shouts to Ross Baraka for his work and his vision. But to quickly tie together a few things that have been said by Brother Glover and by others, and Brother Hamm, and Ron touched on this, and the Taki touched on this. So in Dr. King's last book before he died, Where Do We Go From Here? The book that he wrote just before, that was released just before his assassination, at the end of the book, he says the following, and Brother Hamm made reference to it. I got the exact excerpt, he said the following at the end of the book. And be mindful that in the last numbers I checked, there were about 40 million, 45 million poor people in America, so keep that in the context, Dr. King's writing. "I want to say to you, as I move to my conclusion, as we talk about where do we go from here, that we must honestly face the fact that the movement must address itself to the question of restructuring the whole of American society. There are 40 million people, poor people here, and one day we must ask the question, why are there 40 million poor people in America? And when you begin to ask that question, you are raising a question about the economic system, about a broader distribution of wealth. When you ask that question, you must begin to question the capitalistic economy," the words of Dr. King. If you round up every single millionaire in America and ask them, "How did you make your millions?", from the lottery, from inheritance, from savings, from stocks, from bonds, seven out of 10 will tell you they made their millions by owning a business, by owning a business. So the only way we restructure this society, the only way we transform Newark, is by creating more successful business owners. And that's two ways. The first is teaching our young people that you don't just have to go get a job, you can own something in this city. I'm a first-generation entrepreneur, I started at the age of 18, that's why I've been in business 25 years. I started in college at Rutgers. I have no one in my family, a shout to Rutgers, who had ever launched a business, but I had a friend who was 21, who launched the company. I said, "If he can do it, why can't I do it?" The second thing is, for those of us that are in business, show of hands, how many entrepreneurs here, past, present, or future, in the room, alright? I say you proud, brother, I'm not mad at you. The second thing we gotta do is, we have to support existing business owners to accelerate their growth, because, and I'm gonna close on this, 98% of all companies are small companies. 75% of jobs are created Seventy-five percent of jobs are created by small companies. Black-owned businesses have the highest likelihood of employing black people. So, if you want to create wealth, you want to create jobs, you want to transform Newark, we need not just entrepreneurs, but entrepreneurs who do not forget where they come from. And when they make that money and build that wealth, they reinvest the money back into the community, that's what we need.
All right.
And I'm looking to launch, last thing I'm going to say. I'm looking to launch, and we've been talking about this, and this is my commitment to Newark. We've been, we're looking to launch a black business accelerator program that brings together the anchor institutions, Prudential, PSENG, Verizon, all the big anchors, Rutgers, NJIT, and translates their spending to more local spending with local businesses to build the local economy, to create local jobs and local opportunity. That's what we're working on right now. So, that's my contribution to the Marshall Plan.
All right. That's like concrete, all right? Okay, let me just say this. Growing those businesses, you heard Nataki Kambon, right? I'm connecting the dots. She says she is about taking mom and pop, and I'm not saying that disparagingly, small businesses that have a hundred thousand, a hundred, she's saying she's willing to be here in Newark to help scale them up to million-dollar, multimillion-dollar. That's what her commitment was, Nataki Kambon. Next, I want to go to Mike Roberts. Michael Roberts is, I've already described him, he's phenomenal. He is, maybe I already told this story, but he's the kind of person who owns radio stations, a bunch of other things, but as I think I may have said this earlier, I'll repeat it. When Chokwe Lomumba, the father of Chokwe Anta Lomumba, was running for mayor in Jackson, Mississippi, he essentially quietly said, "You got my radio station. Do what you got to do." And that's, and in-kind contributions, that's like, that's like a lot, right? But that's his consciousness. He's been willing to do that. He's been willing to work with people to help build businesses all across this country. So, Mike, Michael Roberts, would you be, Dr. Michael Roberts, would you be so kind as to share your sense of the opportunities and the challenges in terms of what you would be saying to brothers and sisters here in Newark?
Thank you very much. Good evening. Danny, my daddy worked at the post office for thirty-nine years. We weren't rich, we weren't poor, we just never had any money. I think a few other people probably would know what I mean by that. Incidentally, he turned ninety-five in October, and the same week he turned ninety-five, he wouldn't have got his driver's license renewed. And my mom is eighty-eight, they've been married seventy years. So, that's another testament to what it takes to build an institution. I have, I've built several hundred companies. And we did some math the other day, and we've employed in our years, close to eleven thousand people. Ninety-nine percent were African-American. I've owned about fourteen hotels. Actually, I've owned about twelve TV stations as well as a radio station. At one point, I owned three city blocks in downtown St. Louis. I'm from St. Louis, I live in St. Louis, similar to what's here. And Muhammad Ali said, "It ain't bragging if you can back it up," so I'll speak freely to my family here. I think that we have to recognize a few things quickly. One, every day when we wake up, we're given eighty-six thousand four hundred seconds. That's an existential view. We have to look at living every moment to its fullest extent, so we have to work all the time. Mr. Mayor, one of the things we have to do is we have to be disruptive. We have to disrupt our minds from what we think and the way we've been taught, and we have to replenish it with a fresh, new idea. In business, there's all types of things breaking. You've all heard about Bitcoins and cryptocurrency and blockchain and artificial intelligence and drones and cyber security. Everything I've named will be business opportunities that will translate into billions of dollars for you if you disrupt your thinking. Because blockchain as we know it will sooner or later replace the internet as we know it. Now, that's how deep it is, and I dropped that on you only because it's my responsibility as a futurist to begin to say that. I built a wireless phone company in Missouri. It was a digital phone company when everybody else was still on analog phones. You remember when the coolest person in the theater had a phone in their briefcase? Remember the snap, crackle, drop? And now, everybody has a phone. I've taken three companies public. One of them was my cellular company and Sprint bought it. And I say that because most of you don't know Mike Roberts or my brother Steve Roberts. I understand you don't know us, but you know why you don't know us? Is because rich people scream, but wealthy people whisper. Mr. Mayor, let me tell you a little story. About seven years ago, I looked at Detroit and I realized that we've had all kinds of problems. We had the mayors going to jail, we had disruption of a different type. And I went there and I looked at a little hotel on the Detroit River, it was owned by the Omni people, and they decided that they were going to board up and leave Detroit like everybody else. I decided what I would do is come in and buy that hotel. Why? Because ninety-three percent of that community was black. And my position was, if I build something great and beautiful, our people will support it. Danny Glover has been at my hotel, and we have enjoyed some times together there. Today, it's one of the best hotels in the country, and unfortunately, I say it this way because now I'm the only African-American hotel owner in the city of Detroit. With all those black folks doing all these things, we still don't own very much of anything, which is what my brother here is saying. We have to develop wealth. What is wealth? Wealth is something that's sustainable, generational. I have four kids. I made sure like they went to law school like me, all four of them. So, as hard as I've worked and I've been all over the country, I'm the largest African-American developer in the Bahamas today. I say that because somebody has to set examples. When I bought a hotel in downtown St. Louis, there was a time at that hotel, they didn't want blacks to deliver the mail at that hotel. I then bought that hotel, and my daddy worked at the post office. And next door to it was the Orpheum Theater. They didn't want, when my mama told me that they used to not let them in, and then eventually we would sit in the nosebleed section, I bought that theater. And then my mama could sit wherever she wanted after that. It is nothing like the concept of developing wealth. Because a brother with money can sit up here and say anything he wants to and not be afraid of anybody being able to take it away. Because we are smart as a people, and we are loyal as a people, and we stick together. But we have to understand the value of ownership. I heard this recently at George Frager's program. Check this one out. "There seems to be something wrong with the brother who owns a Land Rover but has a landlord." Let that one sink in for a moment. There's something wrong if you own a Land Rover, but you have a landlord. I wrote a book, Action Has No Season, and in that I talked about the various companies we've built and the philosophy behind business. Everybody in here has a book. You need to write about your story, pass it on, don't let it go six feet under. Let us all know your stories because we all have very interesting stories. Let's make sure that we become more actionnaires. That's a coined word that I have in my book. It's one who takes their ideas, their dreams, their vision, and their passion, and they pursue them with courage and confidence and bravado. An actionnaire is an interesting word because I would hope that someday it hits the dictionaries of Whippapia or something along that line. Because usually, black folks, our words are words like bling, bling, and bootylicious. I mean, we just don't, you know, those are the kind of words they attribute to us. We need to have intellectual concepts. So, in closing, let me just say that in those eighty-six thousand four hundred seconds, let action be a part of your everyday concept when you wake up. Become that actionnaire and pursue your ideas and your dreams. And don't just sit back and talk about it, act upon it. Let the concept of breaking the old thoughts and bring in the concept of disruption and look at these emerging business opportunities. Because when we do that, we will win and we'll be extremely successful. Thank you very much.
So, now I'd like to turn to Dr. Zenzeli Dillon, who's the Global President, Global President of Marketplace, calling international MCI. And she is from Zimbabwe and from Brooklyn. So, we'd like to ask her, from your international perspective, the possibility of connecting actually entrepreneurs and people who are interested in investment around the work that you do that might in fact contribute again to the development here of Newark?
Thank you, Dr. Ron Daniels, from Soroye. That's what we say in Shona, which means, "Please allow me to speak before the elders." I would like to acknowledge the great work that the mayor is doing, the president, thank you so much, and the whole leadership. So, Africa is the happening place. Why am I saying so? The African Union recognized the importance of Africa diaspora, to be part of Africa. Therefore, it has been recognized as the sixth economic regional community. So, we do have five regional communities, which is the Southern African Development, Southern African Regional Community, which is SADAC. We've got the ECOWAS, which is the West African, the East African, the Central African. Now, it is the Africa diaspora. Why is it important? I think most of you would know, there's been a narrative on Africa, you know, Africa rising. Africa is not going to fully rise until the Africa diaspora come back home to build Africa. So, I'm here to say, Africa is waiting for you. Mayor, as I am sitting here, I am part of Newark. I might be living in Brooklyn on the continent, but I'm saying I'm part of what you are building. Whatever help is needed, I'm there. Whatever you need on the continent, I'll run to the continent and make it happen. So, Africa has got resources. Seventy-five percent of the global cocoa market is produced in Africa. About fifty percent, over fifty percent of gold across the world is coming from Africa. About sixty-five percent of diamonds, they are coming from Africa. Why is that? We are buying diamonds, diamond rings from Tiffany. Why can't we set up a Tiffany here in Newark? And we call it, we give it our own name, and we start buying our own diamonds. And we start processing our own diamonds from the continent. What is quite interesting is, the diamonds, they're not in the hands of the black people. The black people are the workers. The owners are sitting somewhere in London, and they're trading the same way they traded the slaves on Wall Street, where the slaves were used, you know, our ancestors. I don't know if you know that, but they were used as collateral for security, as security for loans. That's what used to happen on Wall Street. So, Africa is waiting for us. We cannot sit here and come again next year, still talking and talking, and nothing is happening. So, it has to go beyond a conversation. And I strongly believe that this conference is actually the beginning of us coming up with a plan to cross over so that we start owning and occupying land and owning businesses. And the businesses that we are talking about, we have to think bigger than, you know, mom and pop type of businesses. Africa has got, it needs, you know, machinery. Where is the equipment coming from? Where is the equipment coming from? Here, I'm talking about the yellow goods. Where are they coming from? They are coming from elsewhere, yet we are sitting here. Maybe a challenge to my brother with an app, with all those business people, they need to come and connect here in Newark, and then connect on the continent, and let's set up maybe what I would call an economic processing zone. Right? I don't know about, you know, most of us, if we know that there was a, okay. There was an act that was promulgated in Washington, which is called the AGOA, the Africa Growth Opportunities Act. Why is that? We don't know anything about it. Because it was not meant for us.
That's right.
But it's meant for Africa. To do what? To exploit Africa. So, we are going to rise up and take dominion and start collaborating with the continent. But then, some people, they don't have a good story about, you know, business opportunities, maybe connecting with the wrong people. We do have an opportunity. There's a platform where we've got a gathering of Christian business people. Every year, we meet. Let's come, let's connect across the globe, including America. So, the America-Africa bridge, it is open, it's waiting for you to walk on it.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Our final, our final presenter, if you will, is an incredible faith leader who is doing amazing work. He is all across the country. He is the founding president of the Collective Empowerment Group from Upper Marlboro, Maryland. I saw him rocking in his chair, he was getting the spirit up in here. So, would you please share your thoughts again about the work that you do and how it might be helpful and empowering in terms of what's happening here in this great city of Newark? Reverend Dr. Jonathan Weaver, would you please give him a round of applause?
Thank you so much, Dr. Daniels, and good evening to everybody and to the mayor. You are doing an exceptional, extraordinary job leading here in the city of Newark. I think we ought to give him another great big hand. God bless you, sir. Let me, and Dr. Daniels, thank you so much. I do believe in collectivity. I believe it's so important for people to gather together. We are much stronger when we come together than to try to do things individually. And so, about twenty-four years ago, because of an experience that I had at my own church, getting discriminatory behavior from a local financial institution, after being told that the bank would consider giving us a fifty thousand dollar loan after we had simply paid off a quarter of a million dollar loan in four years. And then the response from the financial institution was, when we asked for a fifty thousand dollar loan, "We'll consider it, but you will have to put up your building that you now own free and clear as collateral." And that three of our trustees would have to personally guarantee the loan. It was with that in mind that I turned around and composed a letter to the president of the bank. I don't mind telling you, it was Bank of America. Just keeping it real. I wrote to the president, and at the end of the letter, after describing the thirty-year history that we had with the financial institution and its predecessors, I said, "And our seven-hundred-and-fifty members will be very disappointed to learn of the response from the bank." I mailed that letter on Tuesday. On Friday, coming back to my office, my assistant said, "Pastor, you got an urgent phone call from the executive vice president of the bank." I called to the bank, and that individual said, "Reverend Weaver, I'm in receipt of the letter that you sent to our president, and I just wanted to let you know that your loan has been approved." I clearly understood why. The president saw numbers. I was fully prepared to stand up on that Sunday, if necessary, and say... I was fully prepared to stand up on that Sunday if necessary and say, how many of you in this room have an account at Bank of America? And when they stood up, I would have said, take your money out and put it in another institution. Fast forward because we have not a lot of time here. Ultimately, out of that, the vision came to not just focus on Greater Mount Nevo, but what can we do for the larger black community? And as a result of that, as of today, there are one hundred and fifty churches and other faith leaders that have comprised to make up the Collective Empowerment Group. We now represent in Prince George's County and the Washington Metropolitan Area two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people. And therefore, we then created a brand-new paradigm. No longer were we going to be asked questions by the bank, but we asked questions to the bank. And so as a result of that, as a result of that, they have to compete for our dollars. And part of that, as I fast forward, is that we insisted that somebody from our ranks would have to sit on the board of directors of any financial institution that has our dollars. I'm happy to tell you, I'm happy to tell you this evening, that one of those institutions, Industrial Bank, the oldest black bank and the only black bank in Washington DC, now has somebody not only sitting on their board of directors that has come from the faith community, but I happen to be chairman of the board. But here's the significant thing. Here's the significant thing. Since the beginning of the Collective Empowerment Group back in 1995, and remember now, this is not about Baptist, it's not about AME, it's not about Church of God in Christ, it's about trying to empower our people. Forget about doctrine. And as a result of that, because those financial institutions, but primarily led by the black bank, over $250 million has been loaned to black folk to buy houses. Because if you're going to create wealth, in many instances, it's got to start by having a home where you create some equity and then are able to turn around and start a business. So that's what we've done. But also, we have strategic partners, black businesses. Let me just give you a couple of quick illustrations. One, Freedom Paper Company. Freedom Paper Company. You need to know about Freedom Paper Company. I believe they're already up here in Newark somewhere. And as a matter of fact, the majority of their employees are brothers that have come out of the correctional system. I think we ought to celebrate that. The second, and Brother Danny Glover, to your point about the fact that we need to be creating bridges. There's another company that actually, anybody here know David Robinson? Well, you may not know David Robinson, but you know Jackie Robinson? Yes. His son, David, has lived in Tanzania now for the last thirty years. He's a part of a cooperative for coffee growers, women in particular, Sweet Unity Coffee. You can get it online and there is a warehouse facility there in Brooklyn where they're helping to process the coffee. You don't need to go to Maxwell House. You don't need to go to Starbucks. You can support Tanzanian women in this cooperative by going online and getting Sweet Unity Coffee. It's about empowerment. It's about generating wealth.
Thank you very much. All right. Would you now please welcome to the rostrum, our beloved brother, the visionary. He's fatigued. I see he's tired, but he ain't no way tired. Too young to be tired, brother. The honorable Ross J. Baraka.
Let's give it up, please, for Dr. Ron Daniels, please. His tireless commitment to making this stuff happen is unbelievable. He gets this done over and over and over again. And, you know, we are forever grateful for him. And I'm just excited about this entire panel up here as well. It kind of reiterated some of the things that I yell and scream and fuss about all day to the folks who work in City Hall with me all the time. They got to hear other people say the same things that I say. And so I was elated to hear you guys, even, you know, the Freedom Paper Companies, folks that we trying to work with now, lighting a fire on the people to make them understand how important these things are. We set an urban marshal plan and in my head, you know, some of this stuff sounds contradictory to people, but, you know, all contradictions are not antagonistic. You know, there's something called the unity of opposites, right? How would you know that you was male if there was no female? If there was no down, it could not be up. If there was no right, it could not be left. So opposites unify, actually creates balance, and that's important for us to understand. So there's only two things that we need to do as a mayor of the city. There's only two things that I do every day that I try to do, there's only two things that I say over and over again when I go around at this point now. And I said it earlier today to a smaller room, and the first thing is to create a city of brilliant, beautiful, courageous, you know, folks that are willing to challenge and transform a system in order to make it represent everybody, right? And two is to keep them alive long enough to do that. And that's important. It's important because it deals with two things that we've been talking about. So we're trying to challenge a system that is designed to keep us in poverty. And so where we live, poverty is an integral part, is an ingredient for a system that we're in. Poverty is an ingredient. So I want us to understand exploitation is an ingredient in a system that we use to function every day. Racism and white supremacy has become an ingredient in that system. So meaning that you can't have that system unless these ingredients exist. In fact, when you pull those ingredients out, the system changes to something else, right? And so we have to have people that are smart enough to A, understand that, and B, work every day to transform that into something that's different than exists already, right? And then the second and most important piece, as a mayor, so I got the regular job of, you know, fussing with people about snow, about potholes, about garbage, which every mayor has to deal with, but I also got to stop people from dying, right? From things, from, you know, violence, self-inflicted, violence from police, violence from poverty, violence from infant mortality, violence from mental illness, violence from poor education, violence from poor diet and poor health, violence for poison in the air, poison in the food, poison in the water, violence from all those things. So I have to mitigate those things because we live in a system that has created that, right? And so we're trying, and those things seem dialectical, but they're important. So on the one side, you have to create opportunity for people in this system to keep them alive. Because if you don't, they will die, right? And because there was no democracy, nobody voted for poverty, or who gets to be in poverty, it's privileged to say poverty needs to exist and we have to wait till somebody figure out how to get rid of it. And in the meantime, what are the people that are in poverty going to do, since you're not one of them? Right? So we have to figure out how to pull as many people out of that as we possibly can. That means we do have to create jobs. It means we do have to create wealth. It means we do have to change the material conditions of people's lives immediately, immediately, like tomorrow. We have to do that. And then second, we have to understand that that also has to be tied to a huge transformation of entire system where we get rid of poverty altogether, right? And so that's why Urban Marshal Plan is important, right? It's important because we can't fix these problems off our goodwill and good looks, right? We actually have to infuse resources in our community and we need public dollars and public commitment to make that happen. And that's democracy and self-determination. Democracy because part of the taxes are ours, right? So we talking about commodities and exchange. It was a time when we were the property, when you were the wealth. We want wealth, but you were the wealth at one point. Your body was the wealth. So we have graduated from that part, at least to say, we need some more wealth. And so we need an infusion in our community. And it was a saying earlier today, the Marshall Plan was not just about creating jobs and wealth in a community, it was also a political document that was about making sure they create and sustain institutions of Western democracy and capitalism throughout the world, right? So that's also was a part of what the Urban, what the, excuse me, the Marshall Plan was about. So we have to have an urban marshal plan that's designed to uplift the people in these communities, train them, give them employment, build wealth, allow them to have entrepreneurship if necessary, spend their money where they want to spend it, all these kind of self-determining things, give their kids better schools, training, knowledge of self, all the things that we need to survive in our community long enough. And then we need to have, at the base of that, the kind of undercurrent that says that we're doing this because we want to transform this whole place, right? And that's what we mean by Urban Marshal Plan. They spent $13 billion in Europe, which today is equivalent to over $100 billion, right? So if we had $100 billion to be spent in our community, what would we do with it? How will we sustain that? And how would that continue to multiply itself, right? What would that look like? What do we want to do with $100 billion invested in our neighborhoods and invested in our community that was purposely disinvested in our neighborhood? The state is willing to give $5 billion and we'll create tax credits and money. We're willing to create that and give it to the private sector to invest in our community. And that's a contradiction, but it's something that we'll take for the present. But we have to think about, how do we force them to turn around and give a similar $5 billion package to a community publicly? And see, the fight with that is, you know, if you ask the state to do that, the people around the state would come and uprise against you because they're not willing to invest $5 billion of their money into your community, communities of poor, working people of color. They're not willing to do that. So that's going to take a struggle. We can't even get them to spend funding for schools equally. Right? So if we say we need $5 billion of tax credits of public money invested in Newark, Irvington, East Orange, Trenton, Camden, if we need that tomorrow, we'd actually probably have to have a fight. A real one. A real one, in order to get that to happen. That's the contradiction that we have to understand. And I'm going to get out of here, but the Urban Marshal Plan is something that we all should be saying. And that's why I love Dr. Daniels, because he understands that all of us on every sector of our society, you know, need to be saying, we need an Urban Marshal Plan. Every talk show, every radio show, we need to call it whatever we want to call it, but we need to be saying, you know, arguing on our entities, we need an Urban Marshal Plan. Not arguing with each other about, you know, there's garbage on my block. We need to be arguing about, how do we create an Urban Marshal Plan, right? How do we create a system that's designed to compensate us for 250 years of free labor, disenfranchisement, lynching, abuse, destruction of our family, systematized undermining of our economy in our cities, the murder of our children, the poisoning of our water, housing that is poor, dilapidated and destroyed, homelessness on our street, poison in our community, bad education in schools that are crumbling at their foundation, guns that have been put in our community, drugs that have been infiltrated in our neighborhoods, cities all over America that have been destroyed purposefully, deliberately and systematically while we blame one another for the outcomes of that. We don't blame the people who created the sickness in the first place. Yeah. So I say to people, you know, this system is like a musical chairs. And we running around trying to get chairs. And the problem with musical chairs is that it ain't never been enough chairs, right? And so they got you believing that you have to listen to a specific song, or maybe you should run faster, or do some push-ups or exercise so you can run faster and get in a chair before this person. But the real trick is it ain't enough chairs. And so while we fight with each other about how to get these chairs and who's responsible for the chair and why they didn't put the chair here versus the chair there, and while we at the council meets beating each other up about what the chairs look like, how big the chairs is, how small the chairs are, how wide the chairs are, nobody has ever said, hey, wait a minute, there's not enough chairs. And we don't want to play this game anymore because the game is intrinsically flawed. We want a game where there's enough chairs for everybody, right? And if we had a game where everybody had a chair, then we all could sit down without killing and beating on one another, right? Never mind if the chair is dirty or clean, or red, or blue, or black, or tall, or short, damn it, we just want enough chairs. That's it. And that's what the Urban Marshal Plan is designed to do, provide an opportunity for us to create enough chairs. And I think our young people are smart enough, because I'm not at this point in my life, to figure out how to dismantle, transform and create a system equitable. So my job is not to create a new game. I'm the mayor of the city. I'm not here to create a new game. I'm here to prepare young people so they can create a new game. And I got to provide them cover fire so nobody don't kill them before they come up with the idea to create the new game. That's all my job is. And if I get to do that, I will die a happy man, that some of these beautiful young people create an opportunity of a game that we all could play with, nobody gets put out, and I keep them alive long enough. I'm the sniper on the roof with the long-barreled gun that are shooting everybody. I'm the Tuskegee Airman that's protecting the bombers as they fly in, the bomb, the whole thing. I'm keeping you alive long enough to fulfill your mission. God bless you.
The honorable Ross J. Baraka. The honorable Ross J. Baraka.